Hello and good evening all and welcome to the Tuesday, April 30, 2019, member of the week, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. I'd like to call the meeting to order and invite all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, as we begin all meetings of the school committee, remind ourselves of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging our curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. I'd like to ask the members and members, indulgence for a quick moment if I may. I'm sure the community knows and is very saddened to be reminded that over April School Vacation Week, we had a member of our staff that passed away, Kathleen Howe, fifth grade teacher at the Galvin. And if with members indulgence, I'd like to call for a moment of silence in her memory and to reflect upon the quality and lifetime of teaching and educating that she did for so many of our children. And thank you all for that. I'm sure the Howe family knows or hopefully knows that we certainly have Kathleen in our thoughts and our prayers. Number four on our agenda is to welcome two newly-elected members of the school committee who are joining us tonight for the first time, Mr. Thomas Flynn, welcome, and Susie Filio, welcome. We certainly congratulate you on your not only stepping up to the plate and seeking election and going through the rigorous campaign process that this past winter and spring was, but certainly taking on the challenges having you both with us is a pleasure and to look forward to working together for the next several years. A public comment, item number five, any member of the public that wishes to address the committee on any matter that may or may not be on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item number six, rather, Student Advisory Council. Come on up, good evening.
Hi, everyone. So some updates from the high school. This week is Diversity Week, which is put on by the WHS Diversity Group. It'll feature a variety of initiatives such as like sticky notes with positive messages that were put up today across the school, a campaign for autism awareness that was done with best buddies. And this Friday is Pride Day, and so students are wearing rainbow and tie-dye to show their support for LGBT community. Junior and senior prom are both coming up soon with junior prom on May 18th and senior prom on May 29th. AP exams are running next week and the week after with may students taking exams. And tomorrow is College Prepment Day, so the day that all seniors will be, have to commit to a college. And then, May 20th is the last day for seniors. Wakefield High School's Unified Basketball Team, which is a basketball team that includes students both with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities, will be having their first game on Thursday.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions or thoughts?
May 20th is your last day of school?
Yes.
Oh, it's a big day.
Congratulations on Northeastern.
Thank you.
Good for you, that's a tough school to get into, that's terrific.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. You've only got a couple of meetings left with us, so we'll have another couple of times to be together. But thank you for your report tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Consent agenda, we have a motion, Mr. Cullen, in.
The school committee accept, approve the minutes of the April 4, 2019 Special School Committee Meeting, the April 9, 2019 Regular School Committee Meeting, and accept the minutes of the April 16 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, passes unanimously. Number eight, Chair's comments and action items. The superintendent and I, with the committees indulgence, want to move a couple of things around between our two reports. One, to be most efficient and also to make a respectful use of people's time who are presenters here tonight, if that's what the committee's indulgence. So what I'd like to do, item eight, D, is I'd like to invite Pina Patel, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, to join us this evening. She's got some interesting upcoming events to share with us. Good evening, Pina, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know which one of these really was. Hi, I am on, here on behalf of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, and I am a school committee-appointed seat, so thank you for all that. This year, I have been honored to be the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. And I wanted to tell you about an event that is going to be happening on May 21st at 7:00 PM here at the Savings Bank Theater. We are partnering with the Anti-Defamation League New England and the Metro North Advisory Board to present a program called "The State of Hate in Massachusetts" and how your community can come together and respond. This event will be talking about the difference between hate and hate incident versus hate crimes and why this is important. We'll also be reviewing incidents of hate in Massachusetts and how statistics are presented in comparison to national trends and review, most important review, like best practices on how communities can come together to respond. Robert Treston, who is the Executive Director, the Anti-Defamation League New England, he will be the main speaker. Robert is well-known throughout the world, he's a civil rights advocate. He speaks on justice, equality, and fair treatment. We are just really lucky to have him come to our school and present to us our audience. We are gearing this towards high school students and above. This is a community event, a family event. It is also, we're hoping that many of the school community can come, as well as a human rights community from not just Wakefield, but from neighboring towns can come. Folks can sign up by either going to our website, which is on the town website, the Wakefield Human Rights Commission website. There's a Facebook link on the Wakefield Human Rights page. And there's also on Through Event Ride. It should be a good night, oh, and it's free, it's also free, so you should come.
They serve you food?
And yes, as a matter of fact, we will be having food afterwards. So it's an hour and a half long, and it should be just a great event in light of what we've been seeing in the community, in our community and our surrounding communities. So we hope you can all come. Thank you. Yes, Ann, questions?
Could you just, if you already said it, I apologize, day and time?
Oh, Tuesday, May 21st, 7:00 PM.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the promotional flyer to this event was provided to us by Pina, and it's in our packets tonight?
And I have extras, if anyone would like extras to help in promoting the event?
Someone will take some.
I just happen to have a few.
If you just leave money on the table, grab them.
Sure.
Put them up in the office.
Should be 14 and 28.
I happen to have 10 more.
So, no, Pina, I was going to say that this is, welcome back. That this is, it's particularly timely, that obviously in the course of the last, I guess, five months or so, that this committee and town council have twice reviewed and revised a proclamation speaking to our community's spirit of openness and awareness and intolerance and in recognition, unfortunate recognition of so many unspeakable acts of violence that are recurring not only around the world, but I guess what we're going to be hearing about right here in our own backyard. So I think this is a particularly timely event and speaks to the great work the Human Rights Commission continues to do to bring these issues to the public's awareness and make, have them become conversational. The more open and conversing we can speak to them, the almost, the more prepared we are to address them. So I certainly thank you and your committee for taking on continued leadership in bringing this event and so many others like it forward.
Thank you, thank you. And I think there's so many questions we hear about what can you do about it? What can we do as a community? And actually, in hearing Robert talk about what's been happening and some of the research that is out there, there are some successes and hopefully we can apply some of his knowledge and his experiences in everyday practices here in our community, so looking forward to it.
Any questions or thoughts for Pina? Again, thank you so much, and thanks for coming tonight to help promote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, I'd like to do is to effectively swap positions, asking the superintendent to provide his reports and recommendations next in order, and then revert back to the Chair's reports. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you very much, much appreciated, Mr. Chair. So at this time, I would like to invite Kara and Jason Pavy up to the table. And so the first thing that I'd like to do is to talk about the review and approval of the job descriptions that are in your packet. So there are four descriptions. Three of the descriptions are just updated job descriptions that are already for positions that are in place, okay? The Curriculum Coordinator is a position that's in place, we're just updating the job description. Curriculum Liaisons are in place. And the next two are technology positions. The Information Technology Support Specialist, that is a new position that was just approved in the budget. And the Senior Information Technology Support Specialist is a position that we currently have filled, that's just an updated both title and job description. So three of the four are not new, they're just updated, and the fourth is in line with a new position that you've heard about during the budget cycle. So I'm wondering if the committee could review and provide any questions that you may have so that we may make a motion?
Mr. Cullen?
Could you clarify the difference between the Coordinator and the Liaison?
Sure.
So thank you for looking at the job descriptions that we put for the last couple of meetings. I think your question is one that, you know, we wanted to be carefully laid out so that all in the district, all of you understand clearly what the roles and responsibilities are for each. So I think the best way to describe it is the position you have in front of you tonight, the Curriculum Coordinator position, that is a non-evaluative position in the district, but it is in fact a leadership role within the district. I see the Curriculum Coordinators as, right now, we have five to 12 Curriculum Coordinators in every content area, and those coordinators oversee the curriculum in world languages, English, math, science, and social studies across five through 12. So they're very much involved in standards alignment, in working with teachers around curriculum materials, coaching teachers on instructional practices. It's just a hugely valuable role within the district that I'll get a little bit into in our presentation tonight. So I see that, so that role is full-time curriculum coordination, coaching teachers, and then for support for the Curriculum Coordinators, because that is a big job, to oversee Curriculum five through 12, support is definitely needed at the classroom level. And at the high school, we have the Department Coordinator role, which I believe you reviewed that job description, that was recently updated as well. I think that was the last meeting. That role is definitely one that is in partnership with the Curriculum Coordinator. It was important to me, and part of my responsibility is curriculum instruction across the district, to know who our team is in terms of overseeing curriculum. And I think the Department Coordinator role is a really valuable one as well. Department Coordinators do teach classes, they teach less to have time to collaborate with the Curriculum Coordinators, but that's also a leadership role within the department. And they're often part of the planning process for professional development, department meetings, and that sort of thing. The Curriculum Liaison role, which you're looking at tonight, that is a role that is again a support to the Curriculum Coordinators at the Galvin Middle School. And there are differences, it was important for us, a lot of the conversation has sparked just in terms of my understanding of the roles and needing there to be clarity and consistency. So we started with administration just talking about, you know, what are these roles right now? What do we need from them? And how do we make it that it's clear across the board and everyone's operating in the same way? And we also ran the roles and responsibilities by people in the current role. So the Curriculum Liaison role, they have less time because they're teaching full-time to be part of the whole, the planning of professional development. So it's definitely more of a support role, but it's a critical role. It's one where the Curriculum Coordinator is checking in often to see what things are looking like at the classroom level, if things are being tried out. It's definitely someone I think that you all check in with quite frequently. But the responsibilities are less because the time is less that they have to commit to it. Whereas at the high school, the Department Coordinators have one less teaching block to commit to more planning. Does that clarify?
Yeah, it sounds like what we used to call a good department head, in a way.
Yeah, yeah.
I liked the fact that one of the requirements was that they needed to be the person out in front opening their classroom for like, as a role model type of thing.
Absolutely.
I thought that was, and there's an evaluation requirement on it as well.
Yep.
So I thought that made it a stronger position than just like a department head.
I think so, it's a really important role. And like I said, there's a lot of collaboration that's occurring with the Curriculum Coordinators, but also for administration to check into. And we want to have those exemplary people out there that we can check in with, who can, who are willing to take risks and open up their classrooms and, you know, be models for those on their team.
Good, thanks. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Two, well, one question. So the Curriculum, well, Curriculum Liaison and the Curriculum Co-
Coordinator. Department Coordinator, or-
Department, no, not Coordinator, the one at the high school, what's that?
Department Coordinator.
Department Coordinator. Are they, is it a stipend?
It is.
Okay.
It is, so both are stipend positions. So Department Coordinator gets a stipend that's specifically designed for that role, and then the Curriculum Liaisons get a stipend for that role.
Okay. The one thing that I guess in hindsight would have been really helpful to me just so I could fully understand and review it all at the same time, and I think you tried to get all of the job descriptions to us kind of at the same time, because I, it's hard to sort of see, there's a lot of the same language, right? And I trust you, I mean, I think you're teasing out the responsibilities, but for the average Joe, it would be easier to be able to sort of line them up and sort of see what the main differences are and, because, not that there's a great deal of overlap, but it just, it feels like there might be, you know? And I just want to make sure that, you know, when folks ask us on the committee, you know, I want to fully support it, but I also want to understand it, too.
And I found that just in a lot of the conversations that I was having with people, I think a lot of structures were put into place, and I think we have some amazing structures that we have to work with. But I think that more information was needed around just using consistent titles, because even just in Lou's talking, like the titles were even being mixed up here and there. So for me, you know, I think, you know, I ran it to Doug, too, it was just really important that we're consistent and clear on who's who, who does what, what can I expect from, you know, people in the different roles, what can the principals expect, what can they expect from each other? But I think, you know, the Curriculum Coordinator, those are our content experts across the grade levels, five through 12. So I see that, and it's hard because it's a non-evaluative role, what's that?
Expert.
Expert. You're going to show your expertise tonight.
There'll be a quiz later.
But, you know, it's all, you know, within the same unit period. They don't have evaluation responsibilities, but they do have responsibilities around ensuring that the curriculum is aligned, that all of our teachers are teaching what they should be teaching at specific grade levels, building upon one another. They have the lens to, for that, you know, that vertical alignment piece where they can see what is happening in fifth grade and know what's going to happen in sixth, seventh, eighth, and then all the way up to the high school. So it's just a really beneficial position where, and then with that, we have the support at Galvin and the Curriculum Liaison, and then the support at the high school and the Department Coordinator, who are also teaching and giving that valuable feedback to the coordinators as well.
That helps, thank you.
Does that help? Okay, thank you.
I think if we update these annually, or whenever they come around again, I think if they, if we can sequence them together, you'll be able to see the difference in the positions. And one of the things that's really critically important to us to be able to tease out is the difference between collaboration and redundancy, right? And so we're really, there's no redundancy in these positions. What, where there is, is kind of collaboration, you know? You know, I think Jason would tell you that in the course of his day, he could work 20 hours a day and feel guilty that he didn't work 22. You know, there's so much to be done, and, you know, what we're trying to do is really support teachers to be up-to-date and current with the latest standards, which you'll hear tonight in regard to the curriculum review cycle. But that's, that's really kind of the focus. And even though the Curriculum Coordinators are five through 12, they're also starting to dabble informally at K through four because we can't, you know, just focus on five without knowing what's happening in four, right? And you'll remember that Dr. Thomas in science spent a whole year with a pilot and then another year doing an action research group, just working with the new science curriculum in our last kind of round of, in the WPS curriculum review cycle. So, but we can talk more about this, but I appreciate the feedback, Ann, and I think we, if we kind of do this on an annual basis, you can see it more linear and you'll be able to compare one to the other. But I appreciate the feedback.
Mr. Flynn?
These, I realize, the stipend positions, the Department Coordinator and the Liaison positions, are they positions that people, the teachers, apply for, or are they picked by administrators?
So that was also one of, you know, the questions that I had and something that, you know, we talked about refining a bit just in terms of process, just formalizing it a bit and opening it up. You know, each year, I believe they were posted, but we talked more just about what that process looks like and, you know, just in terms of even providing feedback to people within the roles annually. And that would be done by the principal. So once these job descriptions are approved by school committee, they are posted, the Department Coordinator positions were already posted. People submit a letter of interest to the principal, and then those people are met with and given the role. And part of that description also had that there would be an annual feedback session.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Colleen.
Oh, Colleen, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't raise my hand. Hi, Adam. I think you spoke to this, Kara, but regarding the Curriculum Liaisons, you were speaking to sort of how it, especially in the curriculum reviews that have happened over the past like 10 years, right? You know, these roles were sort of there already, maybe someone following into this leadership role in the group, and sort of it evolved from there, noticing that it was needed to have, and then, and then falling into an exact position. So that's just how I understood it, is that, because you spoke to like how, you know, you saw the need for it and how it played out.
Well, my understanding is that the Curriculum Liaison role, which I think, I think it was always called the Curriculum Liaison, but there was a Curriculum Lead role at Galvin and a Department Coordinator role at the high school prior to launching the Curriculum Coordinator role. So, but I think that the work is just so big.
Right.
And it's not a one-person job, it's not, you know, just me and curriculum. We're looking really to expand our team, to be having conversations with multiple people, these lead teachers, as well as, you know, our other teachers in the departments to help guide our district goals and make sure that we're all working in the same direction. So I think that what was discovered, I wasn't here for this, was that it wasn't enough support just to have, because you have to, you know, I think, as I mentioned, they're still teaching as well. So in addition to providing input on curriculum, they're also trying to teach, you know, a full load of Galvin.
Five classes, yeah.
And then, I think it's four at the high school, correct?
Yeah.
At the, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Amy.
Thank you. I just have one question, so as a team, because I know they all report to you. So do you make time as a team with all your coordinators to check in, or, and how often do you do that?
Yeah, we do that a lot. It is a lot, because I think, you know, these are my people, I needed to know early on from Doug, you know, with this responsibility district-wide, who's my team? Who do I have to help lead this work? And so we've, we've set up regular meetings, we meet, I mean, at least, I think, weekly, we put it on the calendar, and then some informal check-ins as needed. We're meeting together to establish goals in, not just in each department, but also as a group to make sure that all of the roles are being run, you know, pretty consistently and the expectations are the same. We're talking a lot about professional development, what that will look like for Content PD. And we're also, as part of our work, doing learning walks together where, you know, we walk around and it informs me of what's going on in the classrooms. And so oftentimes, if I'm walking around to classrooms, I'm doing it with the Curriculum Coordinators or the principals. Tying in the principals has been huge, too. Amy and Adam join us frequently, and we talk as a group around what we need to do at each level and, you know, school improvement plans, school-based goals and district goals.
That's great, thank you.
So just as a reference as well, the Curriculum Coordinators are all housed in the same office? It's a little like a college dorm room? And so they're all-
Not on the top bunk.
Last one in, he is on the, you know, and so, and I think, all joking aside, they are with one another, communicate with one another, coordinate with one another about virtually everything.
That's great.
And so that, the level of relationship is so significant, so significant. And it's just paying such a dividend to us and to the, to our students, really, and to our teachers. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Is that fair to say, Jay, you think?
Yeah, I mean, we also try to structure our days, so throughout the six-day cycle, on, I think it's odd days, we're at the high school, all five of us, and on even days, we're at the Galvin, so we can meet with our, you know, grade levels and do that, and also kind of be in the same room when we need to be, but, yeah.
Yes, Susie.
The Curriculum Liaison has a full teaching schedule.
Yes.
And the Department Coordinator has an almost full, but one block for planning.
Yeah.
Is it safe to say that the ideal situation would be for the Curriculum Liaisons to have some planning time? And is there a reason, you know, is that a goal that you guys would like to get to over time? Is that just not logistically possible?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's an idea, I think that would be wonderful if there could be, but I think the way the middle school schedule shakes out, it would be really challenging. And there is, there is a- Um, and there is, there is a stipend difference in terms of like the liaison stipend versus the department coordinator stipend too, which is what we were working with. Um, so we wanted to be cognizant of that as we were working through the responsibilities just to, to be fair in terms of, um, differences in stipend amount and, you know, obviously the, the larger the stipend, the more responsibility that comes with it. Um, so I think a roadblock we did hit, I think it would be ideal for the, um, curriculum liaisons to have more time, but I think, um, the middle school's, uh, schedule proved challenging to do that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the, uh, job descriptions as presented?
And move the school committee to approve the job descriptions of curriculum coordinator, curriculum liaisons, information technology support specialist and senior information technology support specialist as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So Jason and Cara are also here, um, to present, um, the curriculum review, the social studies curriculum review, um, and talk about, you know, the review of both the materials and the pilot and the information that they've worked on this year.
All right, so let's jump right in. All right, so, um, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, the focus will primarily be around, um, the history and social science curriculum review, which took place throughout, um, this school year and probably launched last summer, um, just with Jason being new to the role. This is his first year. This is the first year for the district to have a, a social studies curriculum coordinator. And it worked out really nicely with the, um, new standards coming out as well. Um, so tonight we'll cover, um, you know, I talked a bit about the who has been involved just in talking about job descriptions, but we wanted to talk, um, spend some time tonight talking about who has been involved, uh, what that process has looked like, and then get into some of the recommendations, um, that we will be making in terms of, uh, curriculum materials to be purchased by the district. So I wanted to take this opportunity, but I, I feel like I just got the opportunity just in the job description to, to highlight the role of the curriculum coordinator and just how critical it is to the district. Um, I think, you know, as we go through this process, we talk a lot about materials and resources, but, um, that's not all that is involved in a curriculum review. It's our obligation to provide materials that are aligned, but the work doesn't necessarily stop there. Um, the curriculum coordinators are critical in working with teachers around, um, breaking down the information, breaking down the standards, um, looking at the materials and, um, filtering through it. Um, I think most programs strive to be, um, solidly aligned, but the reality is, um, there's a lot of conversation and work that districts have to do with, um, teachers and supplement as needed and look at, at pacing and, um, timing of, of what needs to be taught. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that the curriculum coordinators are, are critical to that role. Um, I also highlighted in here that, um, the role is one that we're looking to expand down to the elementary level, and you saw that in the budget process with the recommendation of reallocating the current math coach position to a STEM curriculum coordinator to help support that work at the elementary level. And for me, in my work, that gives me, um, you know, a, a district-wide team where I, I see a lot of collaboration happening with the elementary STEM coordinator and in our, um, five to 12 science and math curriculum coordinators as well. And some of that work has already started with, uh, Dr. Thomas going down to the elementary level with the new science program. Kate Lally is our math curriculum coordinator. She's already, um, she's worked with some of our elementary level on some of the math, um, curriculum as well. So we see that continuing. Uh, I, I did speak to, I, I already spoke with the job descriptions to the additional support people who have been part of this process, and that has been the curriculum liaisons and the department coordinators as well. And, um, last but most important, uh, just our, our five through 12 teachers who have been a, a critical part of this process, which Jason will get into a little bit more of that work later. This, uh, this is a district document that is used as a resource, um, each year when reviewing. Uh, the way the, the district has broken us out is each year, uh, focused on a different content area to review. Uh, this year has been history and social science, and this just outlines the, the format, um, the different phases for that work. And this year focused primarily on phase one and phase two, just identifying where we are as a district, what do we have, and then, um, piloting different materials and, and determining what we need and what we would like to, to purchase. But the work doesn't stop after that's decided. It's continuous, just, just having conversations in PLCs through content professional development around what, what is being taught, how it's being taught, and how, um, things are being built on year to year. And I think this was important, um, just to have this, this framework for, for Jason to work with and to, to even collaborate with the other curriculum coordinators who have gone through this process before.
Yeah, yep. So, um, like, like Cara said, um, the curriculum review process for social studies this year was, um, actually, it was, it was actually a really nice set of circumstances in that we were kind of up for new materials. At the same time, the state, um, in June passed brand-new standards for, for, um, for history. So we kind of combined one and two, um, you know, of, of the phases. Phase one was really about assessing, you know, what we had. And in a lot of grade levels, it was pretty easy to assess because I've, I've been here for almost 20 years and we don't really have, we didn't have new materials. So we kind of knew that, uh, we wanted, when, when it was our turn, we were kind of chomping at the bit. Um, and then, like I said, with the, with the new standards being passed in June, um, we kind of got, got right to work, um, which again coincided with, uh, the curriculum coordinator job, um, being created for, for social studies. So, um, we got to work really right away, um, in June and July, um, looking at, kind of doing two things, looking at frameworks. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about the scope and sequence and how that affects classes, um, next year at the high school and at the Galvin. Um, but also looking at new materials and how they align with the new standards. So again, kind of combining phase, uh, phase one and two. Um, I have to say the teachers, um, I, I know Cara mentioned the job description, curriculum coordinators do not teach a class. Um, so a lot of the, the input, um, and the recommendations that we received were entirely based on, on teachers in the class, uh, and their classrooms. Um, five through 12, um, I really have to say, everybody, um, in the social studies department was, was highly invested in the process, going all the way back to July and August and really culminating, um, up until now. And it's going to, it's going to continue, um, into the summer with, um, and, well, the spring and the summer with, um, some professional development. So those were, those were phases one and two. Um, yeah, so, um, the next couple of fa, the next couple of slides just talk about, um, a quick summary of, of what the new standards are, are kind of all about. Um, so the vision here, um, and again, this is, this is across the state. Um, Massachusetts students will be educated in the histories of the Commonwealth, the US and the world. And there is going, there, there's a heavy emphasis in, in civics, um, civic education, civic participation that actually starts K through 12. So civics is embedded throughout, um, every grade level. Um, K through 12, again, we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like, um, in, in specifically the middle school and the high school in the next, in the next couple of slides. So again, just a quick, uh, timeline of it. Um, Desi formed a committee in July 2016, and they actually approved these new frameworks, um, in June of, of, of 2018. You can see they had, they had, you know, a wide variety of, of stakeholders in, in coming up with these new, these new frameworks. Um, but the goals, um, were, were pretty clear. Um, K through 12 to have an emphasis on civic education and to deepen understanding of history, civics and geography and economics. Um, I've gone to numerous workshops, um, by myself with, with other, um, colleagues. Um, and the state has made it really clear, they understand that this is a, a really aggressive timeline as far as, they passed it in June, but they expect every district to implement this by September of 2019. So, um, I'm really, really happy and I'm, I'm really confident, um, in the work that our district did that we're, we're ready to go, um, in, in September.
So the next slide talks, uh, about, talks about the professional development that has happened this year, just as part of the preparation. I thought I would start and just give a review of our professional development structure in Wakefield. We have, um, a professional development calendar that maps out five half-days a school year that are devoted to content professional development, and then five half-days that are devoted to what we call a five-part series where, um, that's an opportunity for stu, for our teachers to engage, to make choices around their professional development, typically areas where they need PDPs around, uh, special education options, English, uh, ELL, English Language Learner, um, options. And sometimes our curriculum coordinators run five-part series that are connected to work that they're doing in the content, but that, that's an optional, um, that's an optional, um, participation by teachers. So I just wanted to, to highlight that, our, another responsibility of our curriculum coordinators is to design the professional development that happens on the content day. And then they, um, they are running their own five-part series as well. So do you want to start with what you focused on?
Yeah, so I can kind of give you an example of, of what we did. Um, and again, because social studies was, um, in the unique position of, um, looking for, for new materials, um, what we did as, as a department was we actually combined the content and the five-part series. So it really came out to about, about 10 sessions where five through 12 could be together, um, to not only, it was really two, two, two big tasks throughout the year. One was looking at the new frameworks and standards, um, how's that going to impact classes, uh, determining scope and sequence, um, you know, historical events might have to be shifted or moved, um, but also looking at the new materials that we're, that we're piloting and seeing, do they fit with, with the new framework? So, um, we thought it was in the best interest of the department to kind of give us, um, as much time as possible to kind of, um, again, try to, try to meet those two objectives. So we, we combined both of them. Um, so I was able to see, um, basically everybody, all the history teachers, five through 12, um, about, about 10 times as opposed to, as opposed to five. So we were obviously able to kind of get double the work done.
Yep, and I can speak to the, some district PD that's occurred this year and will lead into next year as well. Uh, as I had referenced, I have regular meetings with the curriculum coordinators and administration just talking about where are we as a district? Where do we need to go? Uh, what do we need for a plan moving forward? And I think a common theme that we found in each of the departments was that we hadn't spent enough time talking about the standards and how they align with the materials that have been purchased in, in each of the content areas. Um, we feel, you know, that we, we owe it to our teachers to have more conversations around what exactly, um, they, they should be teaching, they, they need to teach, when, um, when they should be teaching that, how much time should be spent on certain standards. And so some of the work that we identified as a group was to get our leadership team. And when I, when I talk about that, um, it's our principals, our curriculum coordinators, our curriculum liaisons, department coordinators and some teacher leaders to really, uh, be trained in how to do the work of identifying priority standards at each grade level and to be doing the work of, of unpacking the standards at every grade level, looking, there's, there's several, almost to the point where it's overwhelming, standards per grade level, and having more conversations around what are your essential, um, standards that need more time? What are some, um, that maybe, um, you can expose to because that will be touched upon in a later grade level? Um, and just to really have that conversation to, to make our, you know, what we're teaching more efficient and to make sure that we're hitting all of the skills necessary to build upon, um, what the students are exposed to, grade level to grade level. So, um, that was an exciting point when we got to the, the, the starting point of this is what we think we need to do. And so we, we tapped into the Marzano Research Group. Um, they have, um, they are highly skilled in terms of standards-based practices. And we did an initial kickoff in March, and we have that group coming in, um, back in, in, at the end of May, on May 28th, um, with a narrowed-down focus. Um, we decided as a group that our starting point is to teach our instructional leaders on, um, how to do the work of identifying priority standards. And then also, how do we do the work of, um, establishing what they call proficiency scales? So that we're clear that our students have mastered a standard and we know, okay, we can move on. Or, you know, if students have mastered standards earlier, how are we enriching their experience? How are we taking those students to the next level? So, um, I'm excited about this work. I'm excited about the common goal through all of the content areas, and I think that will, um, that will drive a lot of our content PD moving into next year.
Oh, okay. Um, so this is just, the next couple of slides just talk about what, um, some of the changes were, some of them are pretty subtle. Some of them are, um, there's a couple of major changes as far as, um, what the new standards and how they impact the scope and sequence at, at the Galvin, um, and at the high school and, and, and social studies and history. So just on the left-hand side, you see kind of what we have been teaching from really 2003, the last time, uh, the new frameworks came out. Um, so that's 2003 to now, and then on the right-hand side is what you could see in, um, starting in September. Um, this is just the content. Um, the, the, the other part of the standards is that there's a lot of skills that are involved. Um, but if you just look at the content, there's, um, the, the other thing I, I, I need to mention is that the Department of Education was, um, very clear in allowing districts to be flexible and creative as far as where they want to, um, kind of put certain topics. The, the one kind of non-negotiable was in eighth grade. So if you, if you just look at eighth grade, um, every eighth grade, um, every eighth grade social studies class throughout the state is going to be dedicated entirely to, to civics and civic education. Um, so we're going to be doing that at the Galvin. Um, and then kind of on a, uh, another note, um, recent legislation passed in May that is going to require, um, eighth graders to complete a civic action project. It's a little, it's different from the standards, but, um, every, every eighth grader is going to have to complete a civic action project as well, um, starting the year after next. Um, so what that looks like, we're really not sure. The Department of Ed hasn't come out with, um, exemplars. Um, but there are other districts who have already been doing that. I, I've gone to a couple of workshops with other, other colleagues um, about what civic action and what a civic action project could look like. So, um, next year, um, we're going to, we're going to try, we're going to, we're going to try this, we're going to run with this where in eighth grade, we're going to, we're going to have a civic action project class, um, at the Galvin where every eighth grade student is going to, um, is going to try to do a project somehow, some way. Um, I'm going to teach the class, so we'll see how it goes. Um, but we're, um, it's, again, it's every, every, um, that, that was kind of the, the heart of, of the new frameworks was this, this emphasis on civics and you can really see it, um, or it's loud, it's made loud and clear in, in eighth grade. So that, that's what's going to be happening at the Galvin. Um, and then at the high school, um, not, not too many changes, um, as far as you can still see. Ninth graders will still take world history. Um, 10th graders will still stay, will still have US one, and 11th grade will go to US two. Again, um, because the, the state is allowing us that, that flexibility, we, we noticed that we're doing a lot of things. Um, we're doing a lot of things the right way already, uh, so we didn't really have to go kind of, kind of reinvent the wheel um, as far as what's going on at the high school. Um, but we did obviously feel the need to update the materials. So that's just the scope and sequence. Again, the big, the big change is going to be in eighth grade, where you're going to see the, the civics. So, um, the curriculum materials, um, kind of just getting down to how, how do we come up with, um, the, the materials that we, that we, that we wanted? Um, like I said earlier, it really started in the summer when the new frameworks came out. Um, myself and other teachers, uh, we attended, we attended workshops that were hosted by the state where they kind of unpacked the new frameworks, kind of tried to tell, tell educators what, what they're all about. But they also allowed time for, for vendor presentations as well. Um, so going back to the, you know, the, the five, really 10-part PD sessions that we had, we were able to really dedicate the first couple in September and October to really just have vendors come in and, and kind of give their pitch about why they think their, their, their products match best with our, um, uh, with, with the new frameworks and, and with, with, you know, what's going on at the Galvin and, and the middle school. Um, so we were able to kind of narrow down the process by, after, probably by October, to two companies that we were, um, really happy with, uh, both at the Galvin and then at the, at the high school. And they, they went through this piloting process where, um, they piloted one company for probably like two and a half months. Um, then they would switch to another company. So every teacher got to, got to work with at, at least two companies. Um, and I can, I can really say, um, the teachers were, were heavily invested in the process. Um, that's kind of the nice part about, about my role is I can kind of pop into any class that I want. So I was able to get, I could actually see how it works, see, see, you know, I could get kind of that informal feedback from, from students and teachers. Uh, but throughout the process, you know, there were Google forms, there were Google surveys that were given. Um, a lot of our PD was spent around us, kind of hashing out, you know, what, what is the best, um, materials to go with. Um, so again, we were able to narrow them down to two programs per, per grade. And by April vacation, um, both the Galvin and the, the high school kind of told me what, what they wanted. And the, I don't know if they have access to that, but that, it's just the timeline of, of basically everything I said, how we did it by the month and what each PD session, um, kind of looked like as far as whether it was a vendor presentation, um, Google forms that kids were given, Google forms that, um, teachers were given as far as how, how we gathered feedback on, on, on which companies to go with.
Yeah, there are some links embedded to, in the presentation, but I think you received it as a PDF, so we can, um, share it with the group afterwards. You can have access to those links to click on.
So as far as the, um, the recommendations go, um, So as far as the, the recommendations go, five through 12, we, we decided to go with a class set of textbooks. So it's about 25 or 30 per, for every teacher, with the option to take them home as needed. And then every kid is going to get a digital subscription to the online text. And we were able to get digital, digital subscriptions for, for six years. I thought the most important part of the whole process, and the teachers kind of, the teachers agreed, the digital subscription kind of outweighed or trumped the, the, the ability to have a hardcover text. You know, it kind of goes there with a, a couple of bullets as to why we went with that. Digital subscription, obviously there's no wait delivery. We, we can have instant access to it. It's interactive, obviously. The ease of access, but also the fact that it's, it's constantly being updated. So we have a six-year subscription, even from companies that we piloted in October. They've already updated their, their platform over the last couple of months. So they're constantly being, being updated. And the other thing is, you know, I heard this a lot when I was talking to teachers, like we already have a digital, we already have a digital subscription. And it's, they, it's not just the PDF. It's not just, oh, I can, it's the book online. A digital subscription for us is like multimedia, interactive, access to graphic organizers, similar, you know, teachers can set up things like maybe Google Classroom. It's not just the PDF that, you know, a lot of our teachers have been used to for the last, you know, 10, 15 years or so. So it's that 21st century learning and skill development that, that were, that was really a, a, a point of emphasis for us. So to kind of outfit five through 12 with every student getting a digital subscription and the, the textbook in every class, it came to about $138,000.
And we can break that, we can break the cost down throughout, as we go through recommendations by grade level.
Yep.
So what we'll do now is we'll just go through specifically what has been purchased through each grade level. I think it's important to note out, to note, and Jason, you had talked about this too. I love the amount of thought and, and conversation that went into it and that it wasn't just decided to go with the same publisher, five through 12. I think there's a lot of different options that we'll put out there. But you should speak to the, the benefits of that.
I thought it was going to be really easy. Every teacher's going to agree on the same company and this job will be wrapped up. Instead, like we'll go through it, like every grade level chose a different company. And they even, some, some grade levels wanted to have a third or fourth company come in. So I, I think that kind of, it was hard work, but I think it goes into how, how dedicated and how invested the teachers were in making sure that we got the best products and materials for, for the kids that are in front of them. You know, what, what works for, you know, an 11th grade AP US history student is not going to necessarily work for, for a fifth grade. And, you know, the companies were, the companies were different. So you'll kind of see, as I'll, I'll go through this kind of quickly, what we went with for, really for, for each grade level. So in fifth grade, they went with McGraw-Hill. Again, you can see 125 hardcover texts, so that covers a class set. McGraw-Hill comes with these inquiry journals, which are kind of these consumables that are part of the six-year subscription. They get them every year. It's almost like a, a interactive, interactive workbook where the kids can kind of write in that, write on it. Teachers liked it because it was really similar to the materials that they're using now, which is the History Alive products. But again, the six-year digital subscription, teachers get the six-year digital subscription. And then you can kind of just see, aside from like the Google survey and forms, there are just some general comments that teachers added as to why they, why they really liked it. So that's fifth grade. In sixth grade and seventh grade, so scope and sequence, sixth and seventh grade, they teach, next year it's going to be world history and geography one. And then in seventh grade, it's world history and geography two. So it's a, it's really a two-year course. So because of that, we were able to get the same company and use the same book. Basically, in, you know, in sixth grade, they would cover the first half of the book. In seventh grade, they would have the second half of the book. We decided, we went with Cengage, which is partnered with National Geographic. So again, you can see class set for every, for every teacher, the online digital subscription for every, for every student. And again, that covers grades, grade six through seven. Grade eight is a little unique. Again, just it's kind of the nature of the beast as far as grade eight is strictly civics. So it was really difficult to find material that was just dedicated to civics. Obviously, companies don't make a Massachusetts civics textbook, right? We dealt with HMH and Cengage and McGraw-Hill, these like, you know, these, these massive companies. However, there is a company called We the People that is strictly dedicated to civics. And they've been running, and they've been producing civic material for, for, for decades now. So in eighth grade, every student is going to get these softcover We the People texts. There is no online component to that. I would kind of, and we, we were okay with that because at, at the eighth grade, for the last couple of years in our ICE Block class, our teachers have been, they've been teaching civics during their flex period. I'd like to say we knew that this was coming, but they, they, they kind of had a passion for it and they decided this is what they would want to do with that flex period, which was kind of an enrichment period. So they, they've been creating their own civics curriculum for the last couple of years anyways. So we have a ton of supplemental resources like already on deck that are ready, that, that we're already using. And again, you can see that's also going to be tied into the, the civic action project that will be part of, which will replace their ICE Block class. And then at the high school, there are no changes to world history, which is at the ninth grade level. Instead, it's 10th and 11th grade, US history, US one, US two. And again, kind of going with the same thing. The teachers at the high school really loved HMH. They're, they're familiar with the product. A lot of courses are already, are already using that. But again, the, the hardcover text for, for every class. And then again, a six-year digital subscription for every student. And then we were also able to get 40 student textbooks for our, for our AP government class. There is no online component to that, but the, the AP government books have been in, were, were in some rough shape. And the teachers were, a couple of the teachers who, who have been teaching that course were, are desperate for, for new materials. So we would, we got that for them as well. If anyone wants to have a bag of samples, if you want to look at the books, if you want, I haven't brought a bag. I can pass them around to you if you want.
I'll do it for you, Jason.
That's really it.
Oh, sorry, yeah. That was, I just wanted to.
Jay, you'll continue to use ICivics?
Yeah, absolutely. I was still using that.
Yep.
Yep, teachers are still using that.
Yeah, thank you. So this last slide, again, with your PDF version, you probably don't, you can't have access to the link. But what Jason did, he, he just added the, the standards alignment links into, into there that I can share with you afterwards and you can have that to access. We can get into more, I know we gave an overall cost to purchase materials, five through 12. It was about, you know, about $140,000. I can speak to a breakdown of what that cost looks like at every grade level or just in terms of, of purchasing, the way we, we are, are going to focus on the ordering is we're going to, to take some of the FY19 curriculum materials budget to start purchasing some. And then we will dip into some of the FY20 budget as well. Because there were other curriculum materials that needed to be purchased this year with that money that was allocated in that line. But I'm happy to answer any questions around materials.
Two totally unrelated questions to you, Jessica. The $138,000, how does that compare to your budget for that, for that? What did you, what was your budget and what did you spend?
Yeah, so I mean, I think when I came in and Jason and I both started this work, I was curious too in terms of what's, what's an average, what's a ballpark. So I believe, you know, within the budget, there's $250,000 allocated to curriculum materials for the district.
Everybody, yeah.
For everybody. Because history and social science was up this year, you know, it's the understanding that, that more of that money will go towards that content area. I think in comparison to other content areas, they looked at about 125 to 150,000 for a content area. So I think this, I think Jason did a nice job of negotiating with that and coming in at, you know, comparable to other content areas.
So you fell in about where you expected to be?
Yep.
That's kind of my question.
Yep, we did, yeah.
And my second question is, is there any concern with these multiple authors? I mean, their styles are going to be very different. And I'm, I'm thinking of continuity flowing through them.
Right. I'm glad you brought that up because I thought that was a, a huge point that I think came out of one of your meetings at the high school with talking to the, uh, high school department coordinator and talking to Amy McLeod, the principal up there, where it was brought up just that it's actually a positive to have multiple perspectives and, and different publishers that our kids will be exposed to throughout the grades. But I mean, I can let you speak to that.
Yeah.
At least that more of as a positive.
Yeah, one was just the, the opportunity to have different perspectives, but also the fact that all of the, almost all of them have these digital subscriptions and kids are going to have to get used to or have some experience with multiple platforms as far as using, using the online component to it. You know, whether it's learning how to like highlight a text or how to find the audio portion of, of the book. It's, it's going to be, it's just going to be a different experience for each, for each student. And I, we kind of thought that, like Kara said, as, as a positive, to kind of have those multiple opportunities.
Forcing some flexibility, maybe?
Yeah, right.
So I just have two questions real quick. One, you may not even be able to answer. The new curriculum that once it's implemented, it's obviously become, it's coming down from the state. Is it going to become part of the state standardized testing system?
So right now, there's not a state test in history and social science. There's not an MCAS. But you're right, if there were, yes. So that basically MCAS is a test of the standards and how well our students understand the skills and proficiencies associated with each, with, with the standards at their grade level and that content area. But if that's a fair, that right now, there's not a test.
And can the technology system that we have now in the schools handle all of the new upgraded technology that you're going to have?
I mean, that's not my area of expertise, but I would, I would say yes. I, I'll look to Doug. I can't say how it went.
Absolutely. I don't, I think the digital tools that we have and Chromebooks that we have, you know, I think the, the wildcard at the high school is because the BYOD environment, you know, some students might have a laptop that may be dated with an operating system that may be dated. If, if that's the case, then we have loaners available.
Okay.
So I, I think we are prepared to handle the digital tools that come with these curriculums. Yes.
Thank you. Jan?
So I was looking through the standards. I mean, I didn't read all 220 pages of them, but I was struck by a couple of things. And, and, and I was focusing on a couple of guiding principles. And guiding principle two is a focus on having students understand that history and social science is, includes diverse perspectives and that diverse experiences historically can impact history, right? And so, I mean, history for the longest time has been kind of taught from kind of a single perspective, right? The sort of mainstream kind of perspective. And everywhere I'm looking in this document, it really speaks to the fact that we need to make sure we incorporate material and teaching practices that allow the expansion of people to understand what it's like, right? From, from folks that are not like you, you know? And I think it's easy to say, I think it's super hard to do, but social studies and history is a really great venue for that. So it's a challenge. And when I look at the standards, the past or the current, I guess, and what's expected, my worry is, is that we'll try and jerry-rig what we did, sort of jam it into the, the new standards without stepping back and really sort of absorbing the breadth of what the whole reason for this kind of overhaul is. Is there, what's your perspective, Jason, about kind of, sort of going forward and, and understanding that, you know, there are limited resources, teachers are stressed. But yet personally, I think it, this is just, we can't overlook it. And it's got to be not just a nice topic, but integrated throughout K-12 curriculum.
Yeah, sure. I think a big part of that's going to come from the professional development that we're hoping to have our teachers involved in, starting, starting in the summer. Kind of adding to what Kara said, is it like a real close examination of the standards? Not just the standards, but also, like you mentioned, those guiding principles. I believe there were, there were 10 of them.
Yeah.
You know, so what does that look like in your classroom, right? So what does each guiding principle look like in your classroom? Or what does it look like in an exemplar classroom? Is kind of where I'm thinking the jumping off point would be, is really, because I know myself as a, as a history teacher, when you look at the standards, the first thing you do is like you look at the content. And it's like, oh, do I still get to teach the French and Indian War? Oh, you know, like what's, because you have like your favorite eras or you have your favorite events or you have your favorite people. Instead of also understanding that there are other kind of pillars to these frameworks. There's skill development, right? That is, in, in my mind, probably more important than, than understanding some of the content. There's the skill development, but also, like you said, those guiding principles. So just kind of changing the focus of a history, and it's, it's, it's hard. It is definitely a challenge because as a history teacher, and it's just, it's so content-driven. Like I, you know, you come in September and it's like, I got to get to the end of World War II by June. And it's like, it's so content and topic-driven and just making people understand. That's kind of the message that we've tried to relay throughout the year is that, hey, that's our scope and sequence for next year. But like, it's not written in stone. We can go back and revise it. Like we want people to just, like you said, kind of take it in and, and, and look at the skill development and also some of those guiding principles as opposed to like rushing through just to kind of get through the content. And also understanding that, you know, we, we are in a fortunate position where we're not a, we're not a tested subject yet, right? So there is not that.
Exactly.
So like, let's try to take that advantage of the fact that there isn't that, you know, some of the other pressures that other subject areas might have, other teachers.
Right. So I, it, it would seem like of all the curriculum coordinators, I mean, your role as the social studies curriculum coordinator in, in terms of leadership and buy-in is, is probably going to be more critical than, geez, we need to know.
Right.
Kids have to know algebra and geometry in order to do well on MCAS, you know? So good luck.
Thanks. Thanks.
Suzie?
Yep, I've got two questions. Is it safe to say that you guys feel like the other AP courseware that you have, since you're only investing in the one, the AP government, is in good enough shape?
Yeah.
So when I, when I had heard about kind of the investment in curriculum over the years, you know, when we first kind of put that in place three or four years ago, that $250,000 per year per kind of subject, I kind of assumed you're spending the full amount on the subject area. But it totally makes sense that you're not always able to do that. So I just want to make sure that we're not leaving things on the table to the point that you just made in of kind of the importance of, and the, the opportunity that social studies kind of gives us to educate our children on things that are kind of bigger and more impactful about kind of living with, you know, in our world. I just want to make sure that we're not kind of feeling like we had to not make investments in kind of other course materials because we got all the basics, which is great and obviously necessary. But there was only one AP class here where you guys were able to purchase materials. So do we feel like we're in okay shape for everything else?
Yeah, I think the teachers at the high school are really comfortable as far as the AP classes. And, you know, the, the other thing I would add to that is that the teachers also made it really clear that they, they understand that just buying like one book is not like the, the silver bullet that, you know, with, you know, it's a nice base to have where you can meet and say, you know, we're, right now we're on like, you know, use the chapters as a guide. But we have a lot of experienced teachers, both at the middle school and the high school, who have a, a ton of supplemental resources and also allows them to have that individual, individuality and kind of creativity that they can kind of, that they can bring into their classroom as well. So it's nice to have that base, but also they're, they're very aware that, you know, they're not, I also try to tell them, you don't have to, you know, they're not going to stick to the book either. You know, they're going to do a lot of these other, other activities.
And I think, you know, it wasn't at the teacher meetings that Jason facilitated, but I think the way he structured this throughout the year was to have the conversation really open and everyone was at the table. And I don't, I don't think he led with, you know, we only have this amount of money, what are our priorities? I think it was pretty open conversations around what do we need? I think it was pretty open conversations around what do we need across the board and I think from what you've, you've said, people were pretty comfortable speaking up.
Very comfortable.
Yeah. So I think we would've heard if I, yeah, exactly.
So.
I, ooh, did you wanna comment on what I just said? Cause I have a second question.
I would love to comment on, just to add, just to add a piece to this. So, so just, so $250,000, so as part of this process, I think we, the curriculum coordinators have done an amazing job at taking the budget out of the conversation and really looking at what are the priorities and how, at what rate can we move, right? And so, an example of this is science, right? So we, we had, we did a build, so $250,000 is not enough money to do a K through 12 build, right? And so we have to prioritize, but, but the other layers and parts of the decision-making is that, so for example, when we brought science in, you know, K through four teachers had said, and the principals of, of the elementary schools had said, you know, we've just had a lot of change in a really short amount of time, can we, what we would like to do is just to take, we would like to work in pilot science next year outside of the WPS curriculum review cycle. So even though science was on that given year, what we were able to do is to kinda split that priority and kind of, you know, put aside a little bit of money to buy pilot materials and then put aside a little bit more money to buy materials overall. So, so that, so what we've tried to do is prioritize over time so that not only is no one left out, but no one's overwhelmed to the point where we're just buying materials for the sake of buying materials. And I think the curriculum coordinators have been really expert at facilitating this and knowing how to do that, right? Because they're so close to the work, so.
That's great. My, I had a second question on the, the review cycle and phase five. Are we, with any of our curriculum purchases kind of at phase five where it talks about assessment and evaluation of improvement, is what we set out to do happening, are students learning and evaluate, you know, kind of evaluating the materials? Are we in that for, obviously not social studies because we're in phase one and two for that, but I, I believe we made investments in kind of ELA.
Yeah.
Three years ago, maybe four?
Depends on the level.
Well, right, based on what you just said, yeah.
Right? And so, and you know, we, we brought in writers workshop.
Yep.
Ahead of readers, so they're on different timelines, but to answer your question is yes. So elementary math will be the, kinda the first one that's kind of coming back around again in the cycle, right? And so, one of the things for us, and I've talked to Kara about this, is that, and we're working with our math curriculum coordinator, Kate Lally, is, you know, you know, we want to keep what's working well and really think about areas that we didn't get to touch on in math last time. So I know high school, we, there are some courses in high school that we need to look at and, and I do think there are some, you know, some courses both in the eighth grade and the ninth grade in regard to our most advanced learners, how are we accommodating them? So, so those are things, those are just some of the things, for example, that we will look at as math comes around again, but it's, there's not, with just purchasing a new curriculum four and a half years ago, because the review cycle has come around again, it's not just about moving stuff out and moving stuff in.
No.
Right? No one could keep pace with that.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah. Did I answer your question?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
I think the work that we're set to do, math does come back in the cycle next year and, and the timing of an elementary STEM curriculum coordinator coming on board is, is perfect, it works out really well. And, you know, a lot of the conversations that I've had this year at the elementary level with the principals, with some of our teachers, is just talking about, right now, we're using the Envisions Math Program, but more work needs to be spent in terms of how that program is being used and, you know, is, i- is it necessary, you know, cause I think we, we bought these materials and, and we've given them to our teachers, but there needs to be more conversation around, you know, what's essential, what could be let go, what lesson isn't really taught well within that program? What's the best assessment tool to, to know when it's time to move on, when it's time to reteach? So I, I, I picture that being very much part of the work next year. I did wanna talk about elementary just quick too, because I don't wanna leave elementary out of the conversation. I know that Jason has consulted at the elementary level just a, a bit about materials that they're using within social studies as well, and I think, I think you were at the point where you were potentially piloting a textbook or, or looking at some textbooks at, at the fourth grade level.
Uh, no. One, one, two, three and four.
Yeah, so can you, can, maybe we'll just touch on that just cause I don't wanna leave elementary totally out.
Yeah, I think they heard that we were getting free stuff and they wanted, they wanted to try some stuff out, so. I've been, again, a part, not knowing the role, in order to do the role effectively, you have to kinda get into the elementary schools and kinda see what they're doing in social studies and, and, you know, where, where kids are coming into the galvan as far as the entry points. So I think, you know, the rest of this year and a, a big emphasis for me next year is just making sure that I have an idea or, or a sense of what's happening in the elementary schools as far as what is being taught for the social studies. And I think one of the things that would help is making sure that they're all using similar materials. So we started off by giving them a couple kits that they can pilot from now until the end of the year and, and, you know, I, I just have to do a better job of getting down there and getting their feedback.
That's great. I just wanted to bring up that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes.
Just with the new curriculum, any interactive or unique tools that teachers can use, maybe at the high school level to, you know, help the kids participate or get more involved in the text?
Yeah, so the HMH has, it's, it has a lot of interactive materials, they have, they, you know, a lot of document-based questions where kids can input, you know, type and it goes right to the TJ. It's almost like a similar platform to like a Google Classroom where they, they can set it up and you kinda give like individual assignments or you could, you could, you know, you could differentiate the assignment if you wanted to, where you could give it to certain students or, you know, give it, don't give it to certain students.
Yeah.
So that was, whether it was the high school or five through 12, that was a, a, a really major point of emphasis was making sure the programs offer the ability to, to differentiate, make sure there were activities for, for all, all different types of learners. So, you know, it's not just a high school thing, it was kind of like, that was every teacher. And we also, we had special education teachers involved in the process as well during the professional development, so they, they were, they were definitely heard throughout the process. So I think the, the teachers felt really comfortable with that, with the, with the choice because of, because of those options that are available.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Let me just say that, that this work continues to, to impress, to impress the committee, I'm sure. And not only, obviously, this evening with the presentation, culmination of the work around social studies and, and history, but I think it really speaks back to a handful of years ago, four plus years ago, when we were beginning to have some real facilitated conversations, some real needed conversations between the end of, I think Steve Reich's last year and Kim's first about the need to have curriculum coordination as a, as a structured part and that assignment not being stifled into someone who does it in between other things. And it took us a couple of years to get a curriculum coordinator in play for each of the disciplines. We're now there after three years, I think, to get, to get five in play. And I think that's some of the, some of the really quality decisions that, that the committee has made to put exactly this type of work in place. There's probably a handful of critically important things that we do every year and the review of curriculum is actually one of our statutory responsibilities and you guys make that really easy for us. It's really hard for you, but it's incredibly important work that you're not just, we're not picking books building by building, that used to happen. We're not picking, you know, books or, or printout materials by having them go to copy machines and hand out flyers. It's really a tremendously important effort that, that had been begun with, even when, with Kim as assistant superintendent and Doug now Kara and the work that has gone on with the curriculum coordinator. So just sort of in summary, you know, this work continues to impress the community. It's desperately important. It really shows the volume of, of, of effort behind it all, that it was this hodgepodge of things a handful of years ago, that's not to be critical, but it's to certainly say the type of work that we needed to do and the type of investment that the school committee needed to stand up and ask the community for. And I think we also have to be able to thank town meeting and the citizens that, that continue to support our quarter million dollar investment in curriculum materials every year as well as the investments that are made in this, into the salaries and benefits for employing the people that help us make these decisions. These aren't just things that we really take lightly there, it's important work to put the right resources in the teacher's hands to stand in front of students and to provide that curriculum and, and instruction in that way. So really great, great stuff, Jason, great stuff.
Thank you.
Kara, thank you.
Thanks.
And certainly thank the team of social studies, social science folks. I'm really excited, I was a history guy, not only in high school, but I was looking at these, I'm reading them and I'm like, I'm supposed to be paying attention to this guy. And I'm reading these, these really cool sci, history books that I'd love to go back and read myself. The, uh, the We the People, I kept that just to, I assume this is, this is the eighth grade piece?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I wanna be in the eighth grade next year.
Yeah.
I mean, I spent like minutes just looking at this and what a nice book.
Yeah.
Really. So again, picking this, picking these things are not, are not easy work, but, but thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
And for coming tonight to, to share with us your, your, your results.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it's missed on, on anyone here that our curriculum coordinators and, Jason are, you know, the future leaders of our schools and of the district, right? And so, when we hired Jason, there was a little bit of a rock, paper, scissors for who got to call him and let him know that, you know, we're so excited to have him as a curriculum coordinator. It's been just a, just a terrific addition to our curriculum coordinator group, so thank you Kara and thank you Jason, really, really appreciate it. Next, I'd like to invite Brendan up, just to talk about Unified Sports and kind of a new initiative that we have going in the district.
Thanks for coming back. I haven't been here in a little bit, so I like the new setup. But anyways, I'll be quick, I know we still have a lot on the agenda, I know we're starting to get a little late. So I'm just here to talk about one of our new programs at the high school, just launching this year for the first time ever, Unified Sports Team. And for those that aren't familiar, Unified Sports falls under the umbrella of the Special Olympics. So the Special Olympics obviously is developed to try to create some social inclusion and respect for people of all varying ability levels. Unified Sports is a little different than other Special Olympic sports in the sense that it combines students with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. So it's really a great, great opportunity to bring together all of our students from varying ability levels, playing together on the same, same team with each other, developing great friendships and respect for each other. So Unified Sports is, is something that's been growing in popularity around the world and, and around the United States recently. It was first recognized by the US Department of Education in 2008. 2013 is when ESPN started sponsoring it and all of a sudden you started seeing more adult Unified Sports. And then recently, in the past few years, you've started to see Unified Sports pop up on college campuses around the United States and now it's making its way into high school. And so this year, at one of our Middle Sixth League Athletic Director meetings, I was speaking with some of our athletic directors and some of our other schools and, you know, we started talking about what, what great way to be pioneers in this field to, to launch a league in the Middle Sixth League. So we are this spring launching first basketball league for Unified Sports. It's only three teams, but three teams is better than none, so it's Wakefield High School, Melrose High School and Lexington High School are the three teams that are starting this up. So we're each gonna play each other throughout the month of May. Our first game is this Thursday, really excited, after school, so Lexington will be coming down here and we'll be having the first Middle Sixth League Unified Sports basketball game ever here at Wakefield High this Thursday after school. Next week, we go to Melrose, the week after, Melrose and Lexington will battle it out in the final week of May. We're gonna have a three-team jamboree in Lexington High School, kinda round robin between all three teams. So really pumped, really also pumped about the response from our students. I put it out to our students and faculty, you know, within an hour, I, I had responses from students. The first student that came knocking on my door was our, actually two-time captain of our, our basketball team, Ryan Marcus, who's, you know, one of the best basketball players in the state in the league. He, he's like, Mr. Kent, where do I sign up? I wanna be a part of this. So got some really awesome kids, Donna Conlon from our special education department's gonna be our inaugural first ever head coach of the team, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I'm really excited, it's gonna be a great thing for our school and a great thing for our kids, so.
That's it. Yeah. All right, questions?
Is there a limit to how many students can participate?
Uh, so we're still welcoming students. I, I threw out in another email today, kinda last, well, post on social media, just last chance, come on down, join the team if you want, but I ordered, I think, 15 uniforms, so, but even if we have more than 15 students, I can get more, so.
Sure, great.
Yeah.
What time will the game be?
Uh, 3:45, oh, so we have it set for 3:45. You know, we're hoping to do like a, you know, starting lineups nationally, just like a normal high school game and so it might not kick off till four, we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Girls and boys?
Girls and boys, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Is it subject to user fees or no?
Uh, no user fees, so Lexington, so that was one, you know, question, it's like, how are we gonna fund this? Lexington High School is, is doing user fees to help fund it, I'm not sure what Melrose did. I teamed up with Lynn O'Neil from our special education department and we figured out a way to fund it through some of the funds we already have in our budgets, so.
Great, well, th, uh, well, this is awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, I think we've all heard, we've seen posts and all heard, but just to have you in to not only speak to the committee, but the opportunity to tell the community at large, this is a, this is a very cool thing.
Yeah, I'm excited.
And, and really, just the three, three, these three districts in the whole state?
Uh, so I'm not, I'm not aware of, in the Middle Sixth League.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not aware of other schools in the state, I'm sure some of their schools probably have it, but I'm not sure.
Andover does.
Yeah.
Andover does, yeah.
Um, you know, we discussed having like league sports and we just figured basketball might be a good one for the spring because most of our teams are outside, so the court's gonna be available. And then if this is successful, we're looking to launch possibly flag football next fall.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, regardless of the, the size of.
Yeah.
What other districts are doing to be part of the, you know, the opening and even our.
Yeah.
Our surrounding communities, it's, it's very good stuff, Brendan.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks to you and the athletic department as well as.
Yeah.
Obviously all the teams and the coaches for letting, you know, letting it all come, come together, that's, this is wonderful, it really is. It's pretty exciting.
Keep us posted.
Yes, I will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you so much, Brendan. Again, thank you to Jason, Kara and Brendan. Love to hear that we're creating opportunities to create inclusion in, in different settings. I just love this, I can't wait to see the game, it's gonna be so good. And so the only other comment that I had to share is focuses on facilities and I need, and I need to let the committee and the, and the public know that, that there'll be an MSBA visiting team here on the second, May 2nd, to look at the Greenwood roof. We put in a statement of interest for an accelerated repair and support through the accelerated repair process to get funding to replace the Greenwood roof. And so the timeline for that, they will come out and, and walk the roof and, and take a look at the state of, of the roof, but they will let us know if we have been entered into the grants by the end of June. So there'll be more information to report on that. With the exception of that, that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for the superintendent or any of the folks? Okay, moving, I guess, moving on, but moving back, chairs, comments, be very, very, very quick in moving through these. Some general comments I'd just like to make, if I could, on, certainly on all of our behalf, a thank you to the community at large for, for town meeting last night. We had some strong conversation, good presentations by the superintendent, the community. Continue to be very grateful to our partners at Town Hall and the town administrator, Finance Committee, Town Council. Town Council, and then certainly the work of Town Meeting itself being very supportive of the work that, that the school department continues to do in a good way. So, we want to certainly thank Town Meeting for their support of the budget last night. And certainly, not only in addition to the budget, but the capital, capital equipment budget that passed, as well as Blattsfield. So, we had three kind of important, three kind of important things. They weren't right in a row, but they were all within, within last night's, same night. So, it was, it was a really successful night for education in Wakefield. And, and it's, we just want to recognize that and thank the community for, for their continued support of what is some really good work being done here in the Wakefield School Department. So. We have, in your, in your packets, it was as announced two meetings ago, we have an appointment to make to the Human Rights Commission, that there is a vacancy, or, well, actually, it's not a vacancy, that our seat is up for reappointment. There are two applicants that are seeking, are seeking that seat. Their, their information and profiles have been in our material, and so we need to make that appointment this evening. The current occupant holder is Amariya Amudi, who we had appointed at this point three years ago, and she is seeking a reappointment, as well as the individual also is, is seeking that. So, we need to make that appointment at, at this time, tonight. And so, we're up for the discussion, the conversation, the, between the two applicants. If anyone interested in sparking that conversation or making a motion, it's in order. Anne?
I, I would like to nominate Maria Moody. She's been a stalwart and very involved member of the Human Rights Commission for the past three years. And I'd like to see her continue in that role. She's obviously still interested in the work. And she is the person that I would like to put forward as one of the school committee representatives, well, whatever that is, nominees, appointments.
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 Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I, I also, third denomination.
Third, oh. That's a new thing, but all right.
Can I do that?
Why not? Of course.
But I, I did want to ask a question. I don't know if, if, if Pina feels that she could answer, if we can't answer it ourselves. And looking at both of our applicants, you know, there was, you know, highly qualified, which was really exciting. And, but also looking at sort of their experience and their age, and, you know, one of our, one of our applicants coming out of college recently. And so, we spoke a little bit about the, the opportunities to sort of include other applicants who are interested in the position, to make sure that they feel sort of welcomed by the group and then maybe fostered, you know, sort of a relationship with them so that they can maybe then, you know, be nominated again or put their, put their applicant in the ring again, and maybe what the practices around that to, to sort of, sort of take someone who's putting, putting their hat in there at such a young age and just fostering that interest, I guess.
Well, I'm sure, not to speak for you, and you're certainly welcome, but I'm sure the Human Rights Commission is nothing but inclusive.
Yes, yeah, yes.
I'm sure that a fundamental platform of the organization, I'm sure, is, and there's always an opportunity for people to volunteer, even without the, the title of sorts. But certainly, any specificity around volunteer positions outside of the commissioners themselves?
No, we, we have open meetings as well.
Yeah.
And we encourage participation. We have volunteer signup sheets for all of our upcoming events besides the event that we are having in May. There's also A Taste of Pride is coming up in June that you'll be hearing about soon in other upcoming events. We are always looking for volunteers and people to join in on our commission.
Great, great. Well, we'd certainly encourage not only Elizabeth Ayata, the other applicant, to continue to become involved through the volunteer network, but in anyone within the community. This, as we said earlier, when we were, when, when Pina was talking about the event on May 21, the, the type of work is, is only getting, in some ways, unfortunately, more important, but also critically important, so we can become more aware how important it is to have the difficult conversations that we as a community need to have. So, anyways, motion's been made and seconded to appoint, or to reappoint, I suppose, Maria Moody for another term as Human Rights Commissioner, as a school committee appointee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously. And if we certainly, when we pass along the, the letter, I think I would, I would speculate out loud, but certainly volunteer to do as, as this is, that we would send Elizabeth also a note thanking her for putting her name in and encouraging her very much to stay, to get involved, to stay involved in the community and its work on the Human Rights Commission. Because it, it takes a lot, as we know, seeking volunteers sometimes isn't always that easy, and we want to encourage that. So, great. Thank you. Okay. Item number E on the chairs, comments, and reports, I would actually like to push off to the next meeting. Superintendent and I have been working really for about a month on putting together a proposal with regard to setting up the high school, a working group. The last week and a half, we have been honestly occupied with, with a couple other matters, and we haven't really finished it, to be completely honest. So, we're not prepared to present something tonight. So, we'd rather be, finish the work that we started in a, in a concrete way and then bring it before the committee when it's more, more ready. So, we'll put that on a, on the, onto the next agenda, or an upcoming agenda. Okay? So, that finishes the, the chairs' reports. Item number 10, budget items. Business reports and not, we don't have business reports tonight, but we do have gifts, right?
No, yep, very brief tonight. We do have one gift, and it is from Ann and Thomas Blaine. It was a donation of an outdoor storage shed for the Greenwood Elementary School for the use, for their outside equipment.
There's our motion.
School committee accept with gratitude the donation of $3,500 for an outdoor storage, an $3,500 value of an outdoor storage shed for the Greenwood Elementary School donated by Amy and Thomas Blaine of 85 Harrison Avenue in Wakefield for the storage of the school's snow blower and other maintenance items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Is that the only gift, by any?
That's it for this evening. I have some more coming, but I didn't get a chance to get them in the packet this week.
No problem. Okay. Item number 11, subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities, as our recently departed Mr. Leakus was chair of that, that position is, which I actually, yeah, departed a little, a little strong. A little strongly worded there, yeah. The position is vacant nonetheless, but there are members of the Finance Committee that are still left standing. Would anyone like to say anything about?
I think that's me.
That is you, yes.
I'm just you.
I'm the one left standing.
Yes, yeah, it was you and Greg and RJ were in the committee, right?
Right.
Anything? Anyone to report?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm in charge. I, we haven't met, right?
No.
Okay.
Not since, right?
Right. So, there's nothing to report.
Very good. Under Labor Relations, I too, we're just going to continue, we're, continue to meet in, in earnest, with a, with a very busy schedule now, having picked up a couple weeks ago and, and forwarding on through the end of the school year, and we'll see where that lands. But nothing to report at this, at this time tonight. Mr. Callanan, policy?
Okay, we did meet. You all have a copy of the minutes of that meeting. We talked about the concussion policies. Felt as though our policy itself was probably appropriate, but we wanted the administration to review and tidy up the, the process to ensure that everything was being followed as they expected in a consistent manner. The religious holiday discussion was had, and again, we felt as though the policy was in pretty good shape. We're going to review some language from, that the superintendent provided from Mrs. Snow Dexter, is that correct?
From?
From Redding?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's going to come up with a little bit further discussion, but at our, at a follow-up, follow-up meeting. But again, we, it's, it's really, the basis of our policy is in good shape. What we need to ensure is that the implementation and adherence to the policy is happening. On communications, we discussed how we might be able to utilize the, the new coordinator from the town, which we're going to have as of July 1. She will be dedicating one day a week to the school department and how we might best utilize that time. We talked about maybe a newsletter and, but we've actually have asked Jen to come in and after, after the 1st of July and, and meet with the subcommittee to come up and see what her ideas might be. And that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for policy? Okay. Student Services, Ann?
We, we have not met. So, there's nothing to report.
Okay. Very good. Number, next on the agenda is School Committee Reorganization. We are, at this, at this point in the, in the year, the first meeting after the town election, which was a week ago today, would be reorganizing the committee, nominating and electing a new chair, a new vice chair, a payroll signer, and school committee clerk. Way that this process goes, we just follow that, follow that, that order. And in that sequence, so a motion would be made by anyone from the body to nominate an individual to serve as chair. That motion gets seconded. Then the, other motions could, would be, would be open to be made if there's, for others that may, may want to also be nominated. And then the, the committee deliberates here about, about, about the election. Okay, is that making sense? Okay. So, I will open the floor for nominations for School Committee Chair for 1920. Ann?
I nominate Chris Callanan to be Chair of the Wakefield School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Callanan, do you accept?
I gladly accept. Thank you.
Very good. Is any further nominations?
For the other positions as well?
No, for, for this one, for chair first. Yeah? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. All in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Callanan.
Thank you.
You want me to finish this?
Sure.
Okay.
We don't have to switch chairs.
We'll have to switch here. We'll make, we'll make a thing in the middle of the meeting. Next, we take nominations for Vice Chair. Colleen?
I nominate Amy Purcell to be the Vice Chair of the Wakefield School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Is, Amy, do you accept?
I do, thank you. Gladly.
Excellent. Is there another nomination for Vice Chair? Seeing none? Nomination of Amy Purcell for Vice Chair, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Nomination for payroll signer. This position is, 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 it comes with all sorts of trappings and expense and, yes, coveted position by all. But it is a regular responsibility on the school committee's behalf to sign payroll going into, physically going into the business office and signing payroll to make sure that, that there is a school committee eye on the, on the processing of the, on the payroll. The regular warrants are done twice a month, or, excuse me, once a month here at this meeting, but we have someone to go in, because those, obviously payroll has to happen in a more timely, and it has to be done, right? We, it's one thing to hold our vendors for a little off on some of the warrants, but we do not want to hold our, our staff behind. So, it's an important, it's an important job. There's no responsibilities here at the table, but they're all done by going into the office and conversing with, with Mike or his staff and simply signing payroll warrants. So, is there a nomination for payroll signer for next year?
I guess I might like to ask who's interested, who has the time. I'm conflicted out through June. After that, I could do it as well, but I.
I can do it.
Okay.
Okay. Suzie would like to do it? Would anyone else like to do it?
Is there a training period?
There's a training period. There's a, there's a six-month training period. It's extensive.
I'm going to write cursive.
You're going to have to practice.
There you go. There you go. Okay. Ann, you're just finishing up doing it.
I am finishing up. I probably need to go sign some payroll warrants after this meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have, we have a volunteer. Would anyone like to nominate our volunteer to just tidy up the process for the sake of Judy's minutes anyways?
Calling.
My screen went dark.
Okay.
I nominate Suzie Vayer to be the payroll signer of the Wakefield School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Suzie, do you accept? I assume you do, because you volunteered. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Dominously nomination for School Committee Clerk. Accept nominations to reappoint Judy Boudiette to that position? Anyone like to make such a motion?
I nominate Judy Boudiette to be the clerk of the Wakefield School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Judy, we're not even going to ask you if you accept, just for the record. You can write that down if you want.
It's a contract already.
Yeah, exactly. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Excellent.
So, we are done.
We are done.
Can I ask a question related to the committees?
Of course.
Of how do, what happens next with getting assigned to committees, Chris? Is that something that you will do as chairperson?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And will that be done in time for the next meeting?
No. Our general.
I love decisiveness.
Our, our, our rule of thumb that we have followed for the past couple of years was to try to let existing subcommittees sit as much as possible through the end of the current fiscal year and then make the change in July, rather than disrupt committees midstream. There are going to be a couple of things that may not be able to wait. For instance, we're going to have to appoint somebody to fill Greg's seat on negotiations because they are ongoing, and I, I don't want to hold that process back.
Got it. You have to have three people at the table, or however many.
Well, we've actually already done that.
Yeah. Okay. So, so that, that's something that's going to happen, but the, the others are, we're just leaving alone until after.
So, Tom and I don't need to worry about being on subcommittees at this point?
Not till July.
Okay.
What about on the finance and facilities? Being that Ann is alone, is that more critical?
What I would probably, all that really, I think, needs to be done, and I haven't really discussed this with Doug or anything, but
Yeah.
end of the year is kind of, just kind of cleanup.
Right.
Transfers, you know, see where we stand. And I, I will probably just sit in with Ann myself on those.
Okay, good.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay. Just a couple of dates. Would you hear under item 12, next School Committee meeting two weeks from tonight in May 14. Tomorrow is MASC Day on the Hill, if anyone had planned on attending that, and the affirmation event on May 21 for the Human Rights Commission. Going around the table with School Committee comments. Ms. Purcell?
I just want to welcome Tom and Suzie to the committee. Looking forward to working with you both. And I'd also, just quickly, would love to congratulate Bob Burnett and David Story, and of course, the girls from the Wakefield softball team for getting approved last night at Town Meeting. And I really am thrilled for them, and I look forward to being able to watch them play on campus. Thank you.
Ann?
Welcome, Tom and Suzie. A pleasure.
A pleasure. I also want to acknowledge Tom Markham's reelection, so congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
It's great having you, like, just segue right in, which is terrific. So it's going to be a good year.
Suzie?
So I figured I'd give a quick lesson on how to say my last name, because nobody can say it and it doesn't, you said it right, Colleen, so Colleen actually knows how to say.
Because you gave me the lesson.
Yep. So Vayer rhymes with bear aspirin, that's the only way anybody can remember it. It's, you look at it and you don't think that at all, right? So I figured it's worth, because I know you have to kind of sometimes refer to me as Ms. Vayer or whatever, so it's good to know how to say my last name. Though, I'm happy to be here, actually really excited to be here. I think you guys know how much I wanted a seat at this table and have been sitting over there, participating, so it's good to be on this side of the table. I will say that I'm, I am interested to see how the rest of the conversation goes around the policy, around the religious holidays. I carefully read the notes and am hopeful on behalf of the parents who expressed the desire to have kind of stronger language around the policy, I'm hopeful that whatever it was, Doug, that you've kind of provided, is looked at and that we kind of relook at the current policy because it does not say anything about homework and tests and quizzes in particular. I think people would like to get that language in there, and then I agree that it's a, it's a process and enforcement statement. So I'm, I am looking forward to kind of where that lands, because I certainly have had some parents ask me kind of where that stood. But I'm glad to be here and can't wait to get going.
Chris?
Well, first of all, thank you to the committee for your confidence in the upcoming year. I hope that I can represent you well and certainly hope to be flexible enough that you feel free to talk to me honestly about anything that comes up. Also, I want to thank Tom for a successful year of keeping this committee moving in the right direction. I know it's not, not an easy job, and I appreciate all the work you've put in.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
I just want to say thank you for accepting me. I'm looking forward to learning everything that happens here and participating, and I'm eager to get going.
Colleen?
Yes, welcome, Tom. It's great to meet you and have you join us. And Suzie, obviously, it almost seems natural that you're sitting with us, and I look forward to, you know, many conversations and decisions that we're going to have. Thank you to Tom. Tom, I always feel like we learn so much from, from your, just your breadth of knowledge that you have, you know, you, you really bring so much experience to the table, and I feel like I learned something new sort of every meeting from that, so I appreciate that, and thank you for sitting in the chair position for the year. I just wanted to echo what Amy said about the softball team, Bob Burnett and Dave Story. It was really, I think, and Bill Carroll almost like allowed the applause last night because it was so warranted, right? And, and it kind of was like pep rally, even though we're not supposed to pep rally. But I just loved seeing those, those students in the, in the auditorium last night. They really went through the process, and it was a long process, you know, going from here twice and to the Town Council and to the FinCom. And what better way for them to understand civics right there, right, is to go through that process and then have them sit there last night? Whatever way it went, you know, they learned something so valuable, and it was really great that it was positive, you know, that it went in their favor, and I think mostly unanimous, you know, I didn't look around, but I'm pretty sure there wasn't, yes, it was unanimous, thank you. Yeah, and so just a great, you know, for, for all of our community members, especially our students, to see that their voices are heard and respected and you go through the process, and, and this is the end result, so, so exciting to see that.
Indeed. Doug?
I'd just like to thank RJ and Greg Leakos for their work on finance and helping with the budget, and I'd like to thank the rest of the committee for your support in helping the budget to be not only created, and especially Student Services Subcommittee, I think your, your fingerprints are all over the budget as well, and I, and I think it would not have gone as smoothly if, if I didn't have or we didn't have the support or so much of your work and efforts in that process. So thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
And let me just, I guess echo what, what everyone was saying, in particular around the, the success with, with Blattsfield. And one of the things that struck me the most, even from the first presentation that Bob and Dave and the, and the girls from the softball team, it's just how articulate the, 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 the girl, the female athletes were. They were just, they were passionate, they were articulate, they were prepared, really, you know, Wakefield's best, and they deserve not only the accolades that we and other boards have given them, but they deserve certainly, and they deserved years ago, a quality field to play on. So not only is this, we can all be grateful, but it's, it's long overdue, but we certainly recognize that piece, and we made amends for it in the last couple of months, and we, we as a town came out swinging, if you will, in support.
You've been waiting all day to say that.
I have been, actually, I have been waiting all day for that. But anyway, so I certainly join, I'm sure everyone does, but it's just really a nice, a nice, a nice thing, really, really important stuff. And, and the volunteer energies that Bob and Dave and their whole volunteer team, parents and others, really put it together nicely, so they, they deserve it. And I would just like to thank, to thank everyone for your trust in the past year, your confidence, your, our capacity to work together and to collaborate. That process is such important to each of us, important to our work. As we all know, we don't have to agree on everything, but we have to land somewhere eventually and be friends and be friendly and be colleagues in the process, and I think, and I think we do a pretty good job at doing exactly that. And I want to thank you for allowing me to be the chair of this, of this party in the last year, and to thank really each of you for being so collegial and supportive and into making, to making our successes really, really shine. So thank you for the, for all of that. Okay. Moving on, the motion to adjourn.
I move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of April 30th, 2019.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously. All have a great evening. Good night. Thank you.
Good job, Amy.